So, good evening Danvers and welcome to the January 2022 School Committee meeting. So we're going to start as we always do with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands our nation, our God, indivisible, infinite, and just as a whole. The Danvers Public Schools is a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect, responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence. The meeting is being broadcast on Danvers Community Access Television. Is anyone else in the audience recording the proceedings? I don't see any affirmative. All right, so we're going to jump around the agenda just a bit at the beginning of the meeting, and we have the Electric Division here today to announce its Division Poster Contest winners, and so I'm going to ask Erica DiDonato to come up and give you awards. Oh, I'm sorry, Mary.
Erica DiDonato is not able to be here with us today, so Erica Hillyer is here representing at Holton Richmond Art and Harvest, so she'll be giving out the awards for the kids. So we really want to thank both Ericas for all their hard work on working with the students and getting the poster contest up and running and selecting this great artwork that we have in town today. Erica?
Thank you. So my name is Erica Hillyer. I'm one of the art teachers here at Holton Richmond Middle School, and it was my trimester one students who worked with the DPW to create this year's calendar illustrations. I'm really proud of their hard work and their quality of craftsmanship and their attention to detail, and I just wanted to thank the DPW for allowing us to continue to work on this project from year to year, and also thank the school committee for allowing us to present these awards tonight. So Erica DiDonato, who works for the DPW, who I have been working closely with the last couple of months, isn't able to attend this evening, but she did want me to share the following statement with you, and she says, "Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight, and thank you to our school committee for allowing me to present our 2022 DPW student calendar contest winners. This year's calendar recognizes the creative talents of our sixth grade art students at the Holton Richmond Middle School, whose illustrations help demonstrate this year's topic of electrification. Our winners alongside their fellow peers were joined by the Danvers DPW staff members in early October to discuss sustainable habits around electrification, including electric vehicles, charging stations, battery power, and electric yard equipment. They discussed what electrification means and how it is practiced here in the town of Danvers. Students were able to see one of the town-owned electric vehicles and learned how driving electric vehicles may benefit our environment and local community. After this discussion, students were encouraged to educate Danvers residents through their artwork about what they had learned, with topics ranging from reducing their carbon footprint, electric vehicles, and electrifying the earth. Our winners did an amazing job at providing illustrations that will educate our residents all year long. The Danvers DPW are so proud of all of our contest participants. Their hard work has helped make a difference by teaching our community to help protect our environment and encourage our residents to do their part to participate sustainable habits. So congratulations to all of our participants and our contest winners." If I could have Rayleigh Anthony come on up?
I'm up here, stand further.
Oh, sure. Rayleigh, do you want to go stand up in front? Maria Bravim, who I don't think is here this evening. Gianna Cash. Connor Shagnan, who I also don't think is here this evening. Leah Turenza. Zaid Alkashwi, who I don't think is here either. And finally, Charlotte Wallfield. Congratulations again to all of our calendar contest winners.
I was going to say, now, yeah, pause if parents want to take a picture. If all of the parents want to take a picture, please feel free to move over and take a photo and...
All right, so we'll give them just a second to head on out if that's what they'd like to do.
Bye.
Bye. Good job, Rayleigh.
All right, so we will continue with items of interest to the superintendents, school committee, and community.
I just have one this evening to remind the community that we are holding kindergarten registration this week. If you've yet to make your appointment, please go online to do so, or please reach out to kregistration@danvers.org, and they'll be happy to set up a time for you to help register your student for next year's incoming kindergarten class. Thank you.
Mary, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I want to thank the Human Rights and Inclusion Committee for putting together our Martin Luther King Day Junior Celebration. We are really happy to partner with them, and I really want to thank the members of the Danvers Public Schools community who worked upon these projects. Today, you'll see Amy Pacet and Nora Nickerson, who did the Holton Richmond Civics presentation. They're going to do a part of it for us tonight. We had Heather Connavalli and Julia Neal working on the Danvers High video, along with Jeewu Jada and Marina Adelikis, thank you, as our Danvers High students who were doing the poem before us and talking about what that poem meant to them. At Holton Richmond, we had Nora, and we had Andreas Pierce. We had a graduate from Holton Richmond, but now an Essex Tech student, Camila Ferro Gomez, and high school sophomore, Ty Langley, that are also contributing to the model of behavior.
Great.
So we're proud, and I think it's still, the link is still live if you're interested in, the link is still live if you're interested in reading.
All right, thank you all. The items of interest from the school committee.
I have one, Mr. Crane. It was brought to our attention that our DECA program is facing some issues with the upcoming state competition that's taking place in Boston, I believe in March. As everyone knows, there's currently a vaccination mandate in the city of Boston. So we have a number of students who are not vaccinated, who will not be able to partake in the state competition, even though they'll be able to partake in the country, the national competition in Georgia. I believe that we've tried to make inroads with DECA. We're not getting anywhere, so I was actually curious, perhaps maybe Sally, we can talk closely about, is there anything that you can help us with in terms of how we can work to get these students able to participate in the DECA program? Knowing right now that there is that vaccination mandate in Boston, there is no educational exemption that's being made for these students. I believe it was announced that for our athletes who are partaking in the playoffs in Boston, there is an exemption for them, so it's kind of confusing why our DECA students wouldn't be able to get an exemption, but our athletes would be able to. So if that would be something that you and I could possibly talk about further, about if there's anything that you can help us with to help these students take part in their state, you know, I think all these kids want to do is just, they did a lot of hard work this past year, and they want to be able to participate as a team and as a group. Okay, perfect.
Okay. Anyone else in the school committee? I do just want to mention to my colleagues that we'll probably be having an executive session before the February 14th meeting to, we'll have two items. One will be to discuss and potentially, although we'll take a public vote, the contracts, temporary contracts to the acting superintendents, and the second item is that we need to appoint a representative, that won't be in the executive session, but we'll need to appoint one of our superintendents or acting superintendents as a representative to the consortium. So just, that'll be upcoming, and you'll see that on the next agenda. All right, are there items of interest from the community?
If you have love in your heart, please listen. If you have love for your children, please listen. If you are not suffering from cognitive dissonance or criminal malfeasance, please listen. Who benefits from children wearing masks in school? Who benefits from people stuck at home, unable to go to work or school, church, or travel? Who benefits from nonstop testing and case counts? Who benefits from a captive audience, literally captive to mandates and lockdowns? Who benefits from a clinical trial that lasted two months on an investigative new drug by a company that is a convicted felon for safety violations and false reports in previous clinical trials? No independent review and zero transparency. Why do the pharmaceutical corporations have immunity from harms and liabilities given to them by the government, but human beings can't have natural immunity given to us by God? How is it that the FDA and CDC jointly run vaccine adverse event reporting system lists 22,193 deaths from COVID-19 injections through January 14th, 2022, but we are told they are safe? They said they were safe. 22,193 healthy human beings dead, they said they were safe. But their own study submitted to the FDA last February lists thousands of serious adverse events reported, including blood clots, myocarditis, life-threatening autoimmune diseases, neurological injuries, reproductive fertility problems, cancer, and death. The document states information on efficacy is lacking in all categories. They know it damages the immune system, weakening the body's natural ability to fight off infection. The infections stir up a cytokine, the injections stir up a cytokine storm for nine weeks. Then your immune system crashes like a hard drive, so they see, they say you need a booster. How many boosters? Is this a subscription for therapeutics for life? Did people consent to this? They know it causes blood clots all over the body. Clots in the brain are leading to strokes. Clots in the heart are leading to heart attacks. So bad, in fact, the FDA had to approve a blood thinner for children last year, a blood thinner for children. They added trimethamine to the injections to mask heart damage. They know these injections are not safe for pregnant mothers. Pfizer's own data shows 91% of the mothers receiving the injection in the first trimester lost a child. Veers show over 3,600 spontaneous abortions and miscarriages after injection. They know it inhibits DNA repair. These injections are not safe for human use, and repeat doses only increase the toxicity. Sloan Kettering reported the injections weaken the body's ability to suppress cancer. According to data from the UK Health Security Agency, it's likely continued injections are driving the infections, not protecting the population, causing antibody-dependent enhancement, vaccine-enhanced disease, and pathogenic priming. Not safe for human use. They said they were effective. Normally, a new vaccine takes 10 to 15 years to develop. A recent study in Israel at Sheba Medical Hospital tested a fourth dose on 150 healthcare providers. It found no protection against infection. These injections create an immune response to a pathogenic protein, a protein our body is instructed to make, hijacking the software of life. This protein causes illness in the body, and our bodies are making them. That's not a vaccine, it's a Trojan horse. As our body's immune system will attack the cells producing the synthetic spike protein. These injections have been called vaccines. That is a fraudulent label designed to mislead people. They are, in fact, cellular gene therapy, and if people were given the true informed consent regarding risk benefit, 95% of the planet would have said, "Hell, no." Not giving true informed consent to human subjects violates the Nuremberg Code, medical ethics, federal law, and human rights. This is deceptive product marketing. This is deceptive product marketing. This is a criminal malfeasance. This is human exploitation. This is genocide, and it must stop. I submit this document, which lists over 1,000 studies demonstrating the harms these products cause in human use. In the name of Jesus Christ, I ask you to listen. These gene-manipulating biological products do not prevent infection, they do not prevent transmission, and they are causing serious, short-term, and unknown long-term damage in healthy human beings. I appreciate the time.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Please.
So I just want to read this study from Sloan Kettering study. My qualifications, I'm a chemical engineer. I work in biomedical industry. I do not represent my employer or any type of pharmaceutical company, but the conclusion was very clear that chemotherapy itself is not associated with any worse outcomes, nor was COVID-19. It was very clear sentence there with kids, cancer patients. It's clear that people interpret these studies without fully understanding statistics and the conclusions that are able to be made with that, and I understand that there's a heightened awareness and sensitivity around COVID and vaccines, but there are qualifications that come along with these studies and interpreting these studies, and they're very sensitive about the conclusions that they make, and they try not to jump to conclusion. What happens is people read these studies, and then they jump to a conclusion which is not stated by the data. And so it is very important that we be careful with our words, especially in a public arena like this, so that we don't promote misinformation by improperly concluding the conclusion of the actual study. Thank you. Sorry, had to do my scientific duty. I take it always.
That's fine, thank you. Yeah, let me say this. We make it, we make our forum available to anybody who wants to share their opinion. We're not going to turn it into a debate and a back and forth, we're just not. But every month, you know, our items of interest from the community allow anyone to basically stand up and give their opinion. I think that, let me put it to you this way, Mr. Smith has a particular position which he expresses pretty much every month, and that's fine, as long as he keeps showing up, he's still going to get some time at the microphone, as will anybody else. Having said that, I think even he would agree that his, his position is not necessarily to reflect conventional medical wisdom, let's say that. Now, I tend to be one personally who tends to respect conventional medical wisdom, and I think that the best people to listen to are the ones who spend a live, a life, learning how to interpret data and studied communicable disease, et cetera. But my real suggestion is that when it comes down to vaccinations and whether people should get vaccinated, I'm going to suggest that you don't listen to me, and you don't listen necessarily to Mr. Smith or to Mr. Thomas or anybody else. My suggestion is that, to the extent that you have a physician who you trust, most of us have family physicians who we trust the health of our family to and the health of ourselves, and if you trust your own family physician, then take the time to talk to your physician about questions that you might have, about whether being vaccinated is the proper step for you or your family. And, you know, things that we see on the internet or things that, as they say, "I'm no expert on this," so I would say, I hope people will when it comes to the health of them and their family in terms of COVID. Talk to your doctor and, you know, do some of your own research, et cetera, but get good advice from the people who take care of your family already. That's all I will say. All right, we are moving on to an update from our state legislator. Sally Kearns is here. Joan Lovely could not attend tonight. She ended up with a scheduling conflict, as I think often happens to senators and our legislators, but we're very glad to have Sally here, and I've asked Sally to kind of give us an update as to what's going on on the Hill.
Hi there.
That would be of interest to us, to answer a few questions from us, and time allowing, answer a few questions from the audience. Good evening, Sally, and thank you very much for being here.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the invitation. I don't, some of, many people here I've not met, I think, or I don't recognize you. So I'm Sally Kearns. I'm our state representative, along with the awesome Senator Joan Lovely, who, yes, is, you know, she's on the Rules Committee, she's in Senate leadership, she's the chair of the Women's Caucus, she's got a lot going on, so we couldn't make it jointly, and she was nice enough to say, "You go, and I'll catch up in February." So I appreciate the chance to come and share a little bit about what's going on at the state level. Before I forget, I think it's Alice Campbell who asked about DECA, and I guess what you're looking for is help asking for...
An exemption.
An exemption from the city of Boston vaccine mandate?
Yes.
And so these are kids who can't get vaccinated?
They just are not vaccinated right now.
Because they don't want to be, or because they can't be?
Correct. It's a parent's decision not to vaccinate these children, so they're not vaccinated currently.
Yeah, so that's, you know, when we, when we choose a certain path, we, we accept that there are things that go along with it.
So you and I can have that conversation afterwards.
Excuse me. I'm...
Wait, wait. Stop it, sir. No more. Everybody, we're going to show respect. We're going to treat the representatives with respect. We're going to treat each other with respect. This is not going to turn into an argument.
It's all right.
Thank you.
It's all right. So we, yes, let's, we can maybe connect afterwards. I don't know that there's anything that the state legislature can do, but let's have a conversation. I'm happy to do that. I have cards with me, actually Sally P. Kearns, no, sorry, that's my personal, sally.kearns@mahouse.gov. Email me, or I'll get yours, and we can, or my number. So most recently, first of all, I just, how do I do this? This is right my way, I'm just going to go like that. First, I wanted to say to our principals, our teachers, our building personnel, everybody, teachers especially, our school nurses, hooray, for hanging in there over these past 22 months, the longest 22 months in memory. It's been rough, and I appreciate, and I think most of the community does as well, how hard everyone has worked, and the patience. I know, I'm sure you all saw the story about the student at a Worcester High School and talking about what it was like, you know, just hour to hour. Do I, do I show up late for class because I don't want to walk in the crowded hallway? Do I, you know, do I get tested the second I get the close contact information? Very trying. I thought it was eye-opening to read it from the perspective of a student, and I'm sure you all know, as, as I do, I have several friends who've had Omicron. It's not mild, or for them, for a couple of them it was, and others said they just felt like a truck had run over them. So, and we are still in a surge. The numbers are coming down, and that's great. So I just, you know, by way of saying thank you, just wanted to note that you've all done a tremendous job. So last week, the House passed a $55 million package that will expand, set up and expand some testing. It will provide funding for the, for the masks, and it's going to come through the schools. I know that this is probably information that you all know, Keith and Mary, if you haven't yet, and I know as well that the shifting guidelines have been very difficult, and I just want to acknowledge it. I mean, the governor and his team are doing the best they can do. I haven't always agreed, but I, you know, we're here at, at the 22-month mark, and things are looking like they might be more manageable very soon, though I would love to hear from your perspective, if you feel very differently, if you wish that the state was doing something differently, you know, have at it. Do you? Anybody want to? Okay. Or email me as you think about it. So that legislation is, it's on its way to the governor, I think. I think the Senate's going to do it this week. And, you know, for, whether you agree with it or not, Governor Baker's approach has been test and vaccinate, because that's the best protection against the virus. Respectfully, that's the best way to prevent transmission of this virus. So testing, boosting, vaccinating, more testing, more testing. So I hope that that will prove to be workable for all of you as you try to get through In December, the House did the, the state's share of ARPA funding. It's very, very dense. It's a very well-crafted plan. It's going to have funding for a reserve account, for additional funding for compensatory services for special ed, $10 million for grants to address workforce challenges in approved special education schools, $10 million to support programs focused on creating a more diverse educator workforce. And I know that that's something that, when I was on the Human Rights and Inclusion Committee, we talked a lot about with, actually, all of you. So that's, that's very encouraging. There'll also be grants to public school districts on the facilities side. I know that here, the town does the facilities. And then there'll also be grants to create a pediatric behavioral health urgent care program model, and $115,000 for one pilot to address... program model, and $115,000 for one pilot to address implications of COVID-19 on children's mental health. And I am sure, I don't have to tell any of you, that the effects are, you know, they're, they're quite pronounced in some cases. So, and then we also, I just want to shift gears, because I could stand here forever and I, it's, you've got enough going on. You know about the rapid tests going home. Is there any light you need me to shed on that? I'm assuming you have just as much information as I do.
We're going to talk about that, actually, one of our next agenda items.
Yep, about how that will work, the rapid tests coming home and replacing the test and stay. So I'm going to shift gears. We passed as well, in November, we passed and the governor signed legislation requiring that we teach genocide. And that, we've talked about this a lot at the Human Rights and Inclusion Committee. So it was nice that, you know, things happened and the Education Committee reported that bill out, and now we will have a full, you know, requirement that the Holocaust is horrible and evil as it was. We just saw, we just saw the other day why this is so necessary. Yet another attack on a house of worship, a religious house of worship, based in hate, based in religious intolerance. So the striking remark that I took away from that debate on that bill wasn't really a debate. Oh, excuse me, there was a debate. There was. There was a fellow who opposed it and spoke against it. But the sponsor of it, a guy named Jeff Roy, who's from Franklin, Massachusetts, talked about their research showing that a significant number of millennials weren't sure that they had ever heard about the Holocaust. And that just brought me up short. So we very much need to be teaching about our history, the painful parts of history, and, and we have to be very accurate in how we teach it. And so I, I think that that's a good step forward. And then we've also coming, let me see, the Healthy Youth Act has had some forward motion, and it came out of the Education Committee, and I think it is still, oh, and it came out of Ways and Means as well. So the proponents of that bill have been at it for a long time. It doesn't require the teaching of sex education, but it does require that if you're going to do it, it must be age-appropriate, and it must be, it has to be medically accurate and age-appropriate, and it has to have inclusive information and resources about gender identity and sexual orientation, in an age-appropriate fashion, of course. So we'll see where that one goes. I know that you're probably all, probably some mixed feelings on the mask mandate going until February 28th, and then they'll reassess. If you're at 80% vaccination rate, you can apply for a waiver, and some have done that. I don't think, you know, we're, we're not at 80%. And by the way, my other shout-out is bravo to the Danvers Board of Health for voting in a, an indoor mask mandate. I think that, you know, our, I think that we're doing the right things, and I think our town deserves a pat on the back. And we still do have, you know, 28,000 kids and another 4,700 staff in schools who have COVID. So, but we're getting there. Happy to take any questions.
Let me start with the committee and...
Yeah.
Go right down the line. So Mr. Starmer, Sally?
I'm all set, thank you.
No question here.
You all set up?
I'm all set, thank you.
Good, thank you.
All right. I do want to talk a little bit about the vocational schools and admission, admission process, and we have a separate issue sort of happening in Danvers where there's a, the numbers of Danvers students that are being accepted is disproportionate compared to our actual portion of the district, if I'm making that clear enough. And it therefore results on any given year, it can be a real budget hit because there's really no, there's no limit unless we decide to put a limit on it. Of course, we're, we don't necessarily want to do that. But there are also issues relating to the fact that, you know, our vocational schools taking the right students based on their admission, you know, process. So I don't know if you have any comments on that, Sally?
I do. I'm, I'm involved in some of these discussions as well. In fact, had a meeting fairly recently. Senator Lovely convened it with the superintendent at the tech, and where we said, "This is what we're dealing with. We have a $500,000 increase in our budget every year, over the past three or four years, I think, strictly due to increased enrollments at the tech." Now, earlier, when I first was back in the legislature, I signed on to a letter to Commissioner Riley saying, "Look, you know, basing admissions on attendance and grades for vocational school students is not equitable. It's not a good measure of how a student..." I mean, I'm sure you, you deal with middle school before you dealt with high school kids. I mean, you know exactly what I'm talking about. So it's kind of, it's inequitable, because there could be a kid who would be a great fit at a vocational school, and maybe they are struggling and they hate school and, for whatever reason. So we asked that those criteria be changed, and they didn't. They didn't do that. What they did say was, "Well, we'll give some, we want districts to show us what their criteria are." So that's one part of it. And then the other part of it is just flat-out numbers, where we're, we are 9% of the population of the Essex Tech, Tech District, and we're 17% of the seats. So is that fair? Is it fair that, you know, one town, because it happens to be the town hosting the school, far more many students go there than really is fair if you base it on proportion of population? And I, I think that it's a hard, it's a hard question. You know, the, the Voce School, you know, Heidi Rikio says, "Well, you know, kids have a right to a technical education." And yes, they do. But we have to have some acknowledgement that there is some shared responsibility. There is, you know, only so many seats. That just is a fact right now. And, you know, even if we could, if we could build another one overnight, which is unrealistic, at some point, you do need to say, "Well, what's the equitable way of doing this? How do you apportion those seats in a way that is fair to families, fair to kids?" And then, of course, you get to the whole discussion of, you know, when a kid goes to the tech and we know, they know that they intend to pursue a four-year college program, is it right to ask, could they have gotten that same college program prep at Danvers High School? And I, I think that, you know, these are not unfair questions. I think we do have to be realistic. We have to be willing to say, "Is that really the education that you want? Could you get that education at the high school?" And I, I think that to some degree, you know, you might have kids who choose a school based on many reasons. And, and so that's part of it, too. At, at minimum, what I'm looking for is at least an acknowledgement that this budget issue is very real. It's a half a million dollars every year. Our, our assessment is going up a lot. And so if you lay on top of that, if there's, you know, if there are kids in, I don't know, Gloucester, anywhere, and they aren't able to get in, and we've got all of these seats, you know, I think we have to look at it. So I'm going to be working with Joan and looking at the, some of it is the Voce funding formula. It also has this weird twist with the Aggie. Will always be the Aggie to me. Because it's the only Ag opportunity. So if you live in Revere and you would like to go to the tech, if you would like an agricultural-based education, that's where you can get it. And so that's a factor. So we have to find a way to deal with this, I guess is what I'm saying. And I, it's not going to be perfect, I, I don't think. I know that the town requested of the tech, "Could we please limit our enrollments?" And I think they got a no. So we want to see if we can do a little bit better than that, kind of work with us here, and at least figure out, you know, is there additional state funding available to provide, you know, to provide some help, but you still have that limited number? And then what percentage should, you know, should one community get?
Yeah.
Yeah, so well aware of that one. Yeah.
I think we want to be, obviously, we want to be partners with the Essex Tech.
Yeah.
And we want to see the, the right kids get the education they need from, you know, Danvers High School or the tech, whatever's appropriate. And so some dialogue about how to accomplish that together would probably be a good thing. So we appreciate you looking into that, Sally.
Yeah, no, I am, and I'm happy to do it. And, you know, aren't we lucky? Kind of a nice problem to have, you know, all these nice opportunities right around us, but, yeah. So we'll continue that conversation.
So would you be willing to take a few questions from the audience?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
If anyone has some. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kearns. I appreciate it.
You can sit, that's okay.
You should probably go to the microphone so that people at the town can hear, maybe Sally, maybe, I'm sorry. So I'm going to have you just sort of ask your question as directly as you can.
No, it's short, it's short. Nothing prepared. I appreciate those comments. I am a student of history myself. I have spoken about the Holocaust in the past at school committee meetings, and I would like to say that segregation is the first step towards genocide in a society. That is historical fact. And when you start to segregate society and say, like, vaccinated can only go to certain functions, like the DECA program, unvaccinated are not welcome in Boston, that's a slippery slope with segregation. And my other comment is, I very much commend history and the teaching of the Holocaust, because it was a crime against humanity, so I support that. I, I wonder if you find any problem with, out of the Holocaust, out of World War II, out of those atrocities of the concentration camps, the crimes against human beings, came the Nuremberg Code. And the Nuremberg Code, number one principle, is informed consent for any medical experiment on a human subject. So the masking at 80% for vaccination is coercion, according to the Nuremberg Code. Not allowing people to go to student events because they're not vaccinated is punitive and it's inducement. Those are contrary to the Nuremberg Code. That's what we learned after World War II.
Thank you. Thank you.
The idea that someone would equate...
I know.
...the Holocaust with a policy to protect public health is disgusting. I should probably be more restrained, but it's offensive.
Well, actually, it's historically relevant, because in 1933, the Nuremberg laws were passed...
Eric, do you have any other questions for me?
They made the Jewish population unwelcome. That was 1933 in Germany.
I find this very manipulative, and I won't participate in it. I, again, I am really offended that you would...
This is one of the problems, that what is basically a public health issue is becoming over-politicized, and this is what we get. Are there additional questions, please, for Sally, if you have them?
I have a question.
Do you have a question?
I have a question, yeah. So I can probably just ask a simple question. You know, I know if you obviously herd vaccination, children, everything, but can you allow for that VA emergency authorized with, that you support a mandate for children to go to school, require vaccination for that, even though it's not a place yet? Can you elaborate on that?
Well, here's how I look at this.
The answer, no, can I add?
No, it isn't. I'm just giving you some context. So I had to have measles shot, measles, mumps, rubella. I know someone who had polio. I had a polio shot. So would I support vaccination to go to first grade? I mean, that's what we all had.
For those vaccinations under an emergency authorization, would they try to pass it off to the...
You know, it's 50 years later, and so the processes are, you know, faster. And I'm not an epidemiologist.
Yeah.
I don't know that you are. I won't, I won't purport to try to delve into the...
Do I bother children, that I care to include them all?
Of course you do. Of course you do. I think all parents love their children and care for them and want to protect them, and this has been hard. I, that I will grant you. I grant you that there would be some worry. But will I support, you know, when they're, at the appropriate time? I can see that at an appropriate time, after vetting and after assurances from the CDC and from knowledgeable people whom I trust, and I happen to think that there are some very qualified, I think, some very qualified people that work on this, and I could see, yes. Yes. Does that answer your question?
I know that we're saying yes.
Good.
All right. If there are no more questions, I'm going to let the representative go. Thank you so much for taking the time, Sally.
Thank you all. Stay healthy, hang in there. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate having you here.
I want to give some information. I want to meet together, policy, you may have a personal map. Does this policy...
Ken, why don't you, why don't you go to the microphone, please?
Okay, it's not a problem. Sorry, guys.
That's all right, it's just we're...
So, Mr. Kearns, I thought public comment, we can't be, you know, it's not like a question and answer to the committee, so I don't really think...
Well, it was just a question that Alice had asked, and I found some answers for her, and I just wanted to share it, that was all. Regarding the DECA student who wanted to participate out in Boston, a question was asked, "Does this policy apply to schools or school programs?" And the answer is no. The policy excludes public and non-public schools, pre-kindergarten through grade 12, school trips, school programs, childcare programs, and community centers. Students participating in school trips to covered establishments such as museums or school-sponsored athletic events are not required to show their vaccination status. And if you'd like, Alice, I can send you the link to that page, too, okay? Thank you.
That would be helpful, because it does contradict what our students are being told.
All right. Thank you. So let's move on on the agenda. Next item is the HRIC, Dr. Martin, was the King Jr. event?
I took that out of turn, so I already gave you...
You got it. Okay, good. All right. Our student representatives are not here. All right. So let's move on to COVID statistics and next steps.
So, well, there are six weeks' worth of data, so I'm just going to provide some summary data as we go through it, but we'll remind everybody of what our health and safety measures are as we continue to try to mitigate as much as we can while the students are in school. Mary, if you go to the next slide, so you'll see, we'll start on December 17th. You'll see that we had 166 cases town-wide, with 17 of them in the school setting, with a positivity rate of 7.39%. So this was kind of at the beginning of the surge that we saw in Danvers. If we go to the next slide, you'll see on December 24th, for that week, cases rose to 223 cases, with 20 cases in the school setting and a 7.45% positivity rate. The following week, December 31st, this is where we see a big jump. The next two weeks' worth of data, you'll notice our in-school cases are lower due to the winter break, but we had 459 cases town-wide, 17 in the school setting, and a positivity rate of 8.3%. For the week of 1/7, there was 494 cases with 52 in the school setting and a positivity rate of 13.77%. And then the week of 1/14, you'll see that there was 421 cases... For the week of 1/7, there was 494 cases with 52 in the school setting and a positivity rate of 13.77%. And then the week of 1/14, you'll see that there was 421 cases with 141 in the schools. So you'll notice that we've, we've passed the peak in cases townwide, but this is the week that we see the peak in cases in the school, just due to that being a full week of kids being back with a positivity rate of 17.8%. And then for last week, we had 337 cases with 82 cases in the school or a positivity rate of 17.66%. So obviously, we did see a large increase that went with the increase in town. We're hopeful as we see state numbers continue to decrease that we continue to see that same decrease in the schools. I would also like to extend my thanks to the building administration and the nurses for really taking this on and dealing with the contact tracing and everything that came with this, including staffing shortages to make sure that our students could come to school every day. So thank you to all of them, and thank you to our families for really keeping kids home when they were sick and being a partner in this work with us. So now we will look at some of our vaccination data. We're going to look at this from 12/16, and then we're going to jump to the most recent data, so to look at what the changes were over the course of a month. I'm going to have everybody focus on the bottom right corner, which shows that our vaccination rates in 12 to 15-year-olds was 56% and 16 to 19-year-olds was 66%. If we go to the next slide, we'll see over the course of a month, that data went up to 61% vaccinated in 12 to 15-year-olds and 69% in 16 to 19-year-olds. So we still do have students getting vaccinated and those percentages increasing. As we've discussed in the past, the option to remove masks when you hit the 80% threshold is based on local data collection and not based on the information that comes from the state that we showed in the previous slide. So you'll see, we did see increases in most of our schools over the course of, again, that six-week time period from when we collected data. We are not near 80% at any of our schools still at this time, and we'll continue to collect that data and ask families to share that if they're willing to with their school nurse or their building school principal, so that way we can continue to track our growth in the vaccination rates. Next, we're gonna, if I can pause there for our normal statistics if we have any questions real quick, and then we'll jump into the new testing options that the state has.
Does anybody have any questions on the data?
Nope.
Okay. So when it comes to the new testing option through the Department of Education and Mass DPH, this is being recommended by them. It is moving to weekly at-home antigen tests for all interested staff and families. So it is a voluntary opt-in program. We would be asking that everybody complete their tests on Wednesdays. That's after meeting with our nurses and really talking about when they think the best day would be and based on what exposures are, and then the time that it takes for people to develop symptoms. We decided that Wednesdays would be our day. Staff and families would continue to report positive tests to the school. The district would continue to report those positive cases to DESI. Positive tests would not be reported to the Mass Department of Public Health. Right now, no rapid antigen test is reported to them when PCRs are completed. Those are reported through DPH, but rapid tests are not required to. It is a similar model to which Connecticut and Vermont have implemented already. And the model would be where we would send home a box of two tests with every student and staff member who opted in every other week, so you'd get your two tests that would carry you through two weeks. With implementing this program, it does mean that we would pause and discontinue our contact tracing, which we'll get into a little bit when we get into our next two slides. As I said, it is voluntary participation. There would be an opt-in form required. If parents do not opt in at the first round, they can always opt in in the future and get into that next cycle, so it would be an every other week cycle that you could opt in as they start the program. The tests would be distributed by district staff in conjunction with CIC, which is the testing company that has been assisting us from the beginning with the test and stay program. So again, this is based on research and evidence from the CDC and the state of Massachusetts. So they are showing that the test and stay positivity rates in school are less than 2% positivity. Similar rates have been seen in California and Illinois. So to me, this is showing that the mitigation strategies that we have in place are preventing the spread of COVID-19. So the idea is by doing these rapid antigen tests, we may be finding asymptomatic individuals or other individuals before they come to the school setting and hopefully identifying more cases prior to them coming to school. For our local Danvers data, you'll see that we've ran approximately 4,425 test and stay tests to date, with 37 of those being positive, or a 0.84% positivity rate. So our positivity rate is even lower than the state average right now. And then we are doing symptomatic testing currently, and we would continue to do symptomatic testing in this new program. And you'll see of those, there was 46 with positive results with a positivity rate of 18.18%. So those would continue to be run in this program. So essentially, test and stay would be discontinued, but symptomatic testing would continue, and it would be a voluntary opt-in program for all staff and families. Go to the next. And this is kind of a summary, but as I said, the discontinuation of the test and stay program, discontinuation of contact tracing. We would have the ability to contact trace if a medical expert found it was necessary. So let's say we discovered that we had three students who all sat at lunch that became positive. Our nurses would have the option to implement contact tracing at that point to try to identify other individuals that may be at risk, even though we wouldn't do it on a regular basis. Symptomatic testing continues. We would need to check in with the local board of health, which we have done, and they discussed that at their meeting last Thursday in a draft form. Dr. McLaughlin and the rest of the board were in support of the program and did not have any reservations about that. We've also checked in with our school nurses, who are also all in support of the program as well. We do have Suda Benedictus here to represent the nurses, if you should have any questions from that medical end, but they are in support of it. And then the new test option and the current models, whether we stayed in test and stay or went to this new model, the Department of Education has told us this will be in place at least through April 22nd, but has made no guarantee for any testing program beyond that date. The original opt-in timeline was last Friday. If we wanted to get in to start this week, we did not opt in at that time. We wanted to wait until after this meeting to opt in, if that's the direction that we go in. It is the recommendation of administration that we adopt this model going forward. We would begin with students next week and staff on February 7th. To start, it is on alternating weeks, so staff tests are delivered if we signed up by Friday this week, student tests are delivered the next week, and alternate back and forth. So staff would start a week later. And the, all test and stay and contact tracing would be in place through that week of the 31st, when those tests are distributed and we start our formal process.
Okay. Thank you. So, any, let's, I guess, start with questions. Do you have any questions on the change that is being proposed by the state and that the administration is recommending?
Oh, no, no questions, thank you.
Mr. Tavarna, if we were to adopt this, when do we have to, because I know families have to, you know, agree to do it, when would we, when would families need to respond to, to be able to start January 31st?
So we would be sending out a communication on Wednesday with details of how to opt in, asking families to sign up by Friday to get into the first round.
So they should be checking their email and if they want it, like, as soon as possible with the...
Yes, so how we usually do our superintendent's weekly update, this would be the focus of the weekly update with information to share again about the program and with all of the opt-in forms that come out Wednesday afternoon.
Okay. And then just, I mean, I think that if the, you know, the nurses, the medical experts, the professionals, they're dealing with this every day, if they recommend this, I mean, I don't see a problem with it. I think that we do what they think is best. Just a few questions, a question that came up with a few parents, if we were no longer doing contact tracing, which obviously we wouldn't if we adopted this, my, I know it's harder at the high school and maybe the middle school, you know, but as far as the elementary or even just, I guess, I don't know, Nurse D., I might have to put you on the spot, do we still try to, when possible, space when possible?
So, yeah, yes, all of our mitigation strategies that have made us successful to date would stay in place going forward because that's what's allowed the in-school transmission rates to remain so low.
Okay.
So we'd have in place all the same strategies.
No more test and stay, no more contact tracing, everything else pretty much is the same?
Yes, we're still going to keep them in cohorts at lunch and in classrooms and those different pieces to minimize that.
All right, thank you.
Alice?
I agree with Robin. I think that this is going to be a program that will be welcomed for families in town. I just had a question. If families don't opt in, what happens? Nothing?
Nothing. That's their, their right, and if they decide in two weeks they want to opt in, they can, and they'll get into that next cycle.
Okay. You mentioned the contact tracing at lunch. So will those students then just be told to take a test at home versus quarantining automatically, correct?
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to make sure of that. All right, that's all, that's all I had my questions. Thank you.
Martha? I don't have any questions, but Sue, since you're here, can you just tell us from the nurse's perspective why you think this is a good thing?
Hi. Suda Benedictus, I'm the school nurse at Danvers High School. All nine school nurses here in town are very excited about moving forward with this new testing program. I want you to be reassured, the parents to be reassured, that if we see a situation or hear of a situation of close contacts, we can follow up with that, make sure that their children feel well. If they don't feel well, it's up to our discretion to give them a test, whether they are vaccinated or not vaccinated. So that's what's really wonderful with the shortage of tests that everybody has at home and the difficulty getting PCRs. This is another good option, that you will be getting two tests every other week. If you don't need to use that test one week, that's fine. If you feel that your child is ill in the morning and you want to use the test, go ahead and use the test. That might help you decide if you should keep them home or, or send them, do they have, you know, based on the test? Or if they have been with some family members or friends over the weekend, and you know that there's been a close contact, they've had a sleepover, they've had a party, they've been out hanging out with their friends, and it comes Sunday night and they're not feeling great, you have a test in which you can give it to them. So we fully support it, all nine school nurses.
So we also did talk with all of our union leadership, and they were also on board with the new program. So we did check in with each of them as well.
Anything else?
No, I'm good, thanks.
I, we did check in with, with our attorneys. We don't have to take a vote on this. This is a decision that the administration can make. I don't hear any serious objections here. And so I would say it's your call, and you don't do what you feel is appropriate, and we'll support them, unless you want us to take a vote, we're happy.
No, I think we're just looking for consensus from the committee. So thank you.
Great. All right, so the next item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, I appreciate it, I'm sorry.
We do just have one last piece under COVID.
Oh, yes, please, I'm sorry.
Quickly to share
Absolutely.
a new draft COVID dashboard that we've been developing, so it will be from our weekly statistics to an interactive dashboard that would be available on our website at all times, that parents could access live information. So you'll see, I'm just going to kind of work from kind of the top left. We'll let it refresh for a second. So obviously, the students and test and say in that top left would, would go away now as we move models, but we would show the total cases. The default view would be over the last week. You'll see the number of cases in each school. You'll see that there's a bar graph that shows the number of cases by grade level. And then below that is the total number of students in a percentage basis. So if you have 20 kids and there's 300 in the grade level, it'll show you the percentage of the kids that are currently positive. The top right has a graph that shows you the number of cases over the last few days, as well as trend data in the very upper right. So as our data showed, it's a decreasing trend over the last seven days. And then the bottom half of the dashboard would have that more, you know, static information that would be updated once a week based on the town of Danvers data. So this would kind of change to a live time communication to share instead of doing the Friday infographics that we've been doing. And then the next up will also be looking at how does our reporting evolve with the change in testing model and parents' reporting? So we'll look at what that looks like for the connect ad messages that go out currently to see how we transition that with the new testing model.
And this will be available to any parent slash citizen who wants to access it?
Yes, so we wanted to share with you tonight, and then it would be put onto our website sometime this week. You know, we're welcome to hear any feedback right now to make tweaks to it before we officially post it.
That sounds like a positive. I don't know if there's any comments here. It does sound, sounds like a good deal. People don't have to wait for any emails, they can check themselves, and they get real time.
Yes.
That's great. All right, thank you all. Our next item, as we've talked about, we've done the electric division poster, now we have DEEP Grants, a familiar face. Mary Bethvery.
Oh, good evening. Here in person tonight, good, thank you. Mary Bethvery, current president of DEEP, the Danvers Educational Enrichment Partnership. With me this evening is Mari Matt, the current chair of the teacher grant program for DEEP. Again, I'd like to thank the acting co-superintendents, Mary Wormers, Keith Tavarna, a school committee chair, Crane, and school committee members for allowing us to come here this evening to talk about the teacher grant awards that DEEP has awarded for the 2020-22 academic year. As a reminder, the partnership's mission is to enrich and enhance the educational opportunities within the Danvers public schools. We accomplish this through providing financial resources for educational and supplemental materials to support student learning and enhance curriculum and encourage innovation. This year's grants look to provide great opportunities for students and are some examples of the thoughtful and hardworking our teachers put into their curriculum development and learning opportunities. It has not been an easing year as continued effects of COVID and the re-engagement of our students into full-time, in-person learning continues to present challenges and require adjustments. We are so grateful for our educators who continue to create challenging and engaging learning opportunities for the students in Danvers, and we thank them for their thoughtful proposals this year. A few quick highlights, five of the seven schools were represented this year, Smith, Great Oak, Thorpe, HRMS, and DHS. 21 proposals were submitted and 16 were funded totaling $22,868.65. We are grateful for the district who continues to work with DEEP to identify grants that may be eligible for funding in the regular district budget. This year, five grants totaling about $5,000 were covered by the district, bringing our funded total to the 16. Top three grant categories this year were literacy, STEM, and flexible seating learning arrangements. In addition to our DEEP board member Angela Chumas, we are excited to bring on five new readers from schools across the district and share a big thank you to Paula Jones from the HRMS PAC, Lauren Brown and Amanda Daniels from the Great Oak PAC, Blakely Cassabri-C from the Riverside PAC, Rob Gagnon from the Smith PAC, and Lauren Brown from the Thorpe PAC. And so here, Mari is going to read off the grant recipients, the teachers, and what their grants were. So they're up on the screen, for those of you who are in the room or watching live, so I'll go quickly through them. Any apologies in advance? Working on all of these names. Here we go. Michaela Call and Linda Armstrong from Great Oak School for the Inclusive Classroom Library. Lisa Dorlando from Holton Richmond Middle School Project Lead the Way and their Digital Literacy Curriculum. Brittany McGraal from Danvers High School for the Drive Classroom Reboot. Alexander Conant and Megan Sorrell from Holton Richmond Middle School for the Robotics Program. Victoria Pike from Holton Richmond Middle School for Different Seating for a Different Year. Kristin Detremont, Tammy Ryan, and Mackenzie Dresner from Thorpe School for First Grade STEM Materials. John Hodston, Michaela Belay, and Lori Frankie from Holton Richmond Middle School for Plastics in Our Oceans. Super interesting. Julie Glenn, John McGillan, and Matt Regis from Danvers High School for Sextance and Geometry. Victoria Roberts, Kristen Butler, Kristen Serino from Great Oak School for Literacy Math Games. Michaela DeBano, Paula Morris, Renata Ulig, and Rebecca Waite, Holton Richmond Middle School for Stand-Up Stations. Anaya Anala-Gurten, excuse me, Lisa Fitzgerald, and Abby Nodra Giacomo from Great Oak School, Phonics Centers for Intervention and Extension. Rachel DeDeMoniches and Brooke Bell from Holton Richmond Middle School, 7th Grade Special Education Seating. Sophia Schessel and Heidi Knock, Holton Richmond Middle School, Honey Beehive, Deep Dibs on Delicious Honey. Looking forward to that one. Suzanne Dignard, Justina Podvani, Cynthia Grady from Smith School, Developing Critical Readers and Thinkers. Lisa Trask, Jaclyn White, Pamela Foss from Danvers High School for Active Learners for Reading Comprehension. And last but certainly not least, Anne Hogenson, Amanda Pace, Tiffany Timilio, Lindsay Perry, Brian Vosler, Adam Brian Vosler, Adam Weiss, and Meg Webenson from Danvers High School. From Holton Richmond, Stephanie Bennett, Manuela Bologna, Jeanne Clausen, Elizabeth Foley, Katie Gardner, Maria Latuski, and Maria Lena Leslie for World Language Classroom Libraries totaling $22,868.65. We thank these teachers for their thoughtfulness, for their great work, for the opportunities they're going to provide for our students this year and next. Um, one of the beautiful things about the grants is that they often provide materials that not just last one school year, but continue to help students year in and year in and year out. So we're looking forward to the great work that will come from these efforts. Thank you very much.
And we'd just like to thank DEEP for all of their support of the teachers and extend our thank you on behalf of the teachers. Um, we did not invite them as we might have done in pre-COVID years. Um, we obviously formed the agenda before we moved here and just made the decision that it would just have Mary Beth and Mari come and recognize them. So thank you on their behalf from us.
Yeah, and so I just wanted to add a couple of things. All teachers have been notified and some have even already been ordering their materials. Um, I also want to thank folks that are here that are listening to us. I appreciate you. I know you're here probably for another presentation, but I do appreciate you staying, unlike some folks that left because their topic was over. But this is important information for you to hear, for the community to hear, because this is the work that's being done in the community, for the community, for the students. So I just wanted to give a shout out to that. This will also serve as a DEEP update right now. Just want to let you know that on February 9th, the Holton Richmond DEEP Spelling Bee will be taking place and it will be happening at the Danvers High School in person. I want to thank Ellen Ferwick, Mary Wormers, Brendan Norton, uh, and all the teachers for the support and helping to identify the students that will be participating. There'll be roughly 40 students in grades six through eight that will be participating in this spelling bee with the opportunity for the winner to move on to the regional spelling bee that will be taking place later on, I believe in February or early March. Um, the next DEEP meeting is on February 16th at 8:00 AM at the Brookline Bank here in Danvers. And just wanted to announce also that our proposed wine tasting that was maybe going to happen March 31st will be pushed out to October. Um, with things currently in flux right now, um, we thought it best to move it forward. And hopefully by October of 2022, we will be back to a little bit more of a normal, um, situation where we can enjoy food and wine and businesses will be able to participate by then. And as always, DEEP's always looking for new members to help, um, continue the great work that DEEP has been doing since the 90s, which is raising the funds to help support, um, student learning in the Danvers public schools. So with that, if there's any questions that we can answer?
Any questions or comments from the committee?
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think just more of a sincere thanks for everything that you do for our students and our teachers. Because I, I do know from teachers that, um, a lot of them do put in applications for the grants and that grant money is very much appreciated and, you know, our students taking advantage of it is so, um, you know, appreciated. So thank you.
Yeah, given how difficult it's been to, uh, I'm sure to fundraise to some extent over the last couple of years, it's, uh, really appreciated that you can still run this program and have it be so robust and everybody appreciates it. Thank you, Mary Beth. Thank you.
There was one other thing I wanted to say. Oh, uh, most important, sorry. Want to thank our, the community members that support DEEP, the sponsors that support us year after year and support the students in learning. We could not do it without them. We could not do it without their, their support. And like you said, Eric, it has been very challenging the last couple of years. We have been unable to do any real fundraising because of what's going on. Uh, but we've been able to still support what we feel is most important, um, in the community here in Danvers, Danvers Public Schools. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Danvers, we have a Danvers Pride presentation on the return of Danvers Pride.
We have the return of Danvers Pride and we decided that, uh, this, uh, presentation by Amy Facet and Nora Nickerson was very appropriate because, uh, we had the Holton Richmond, uh, calendar contest people, so we're on the Holton Richmond theme. So we have a presentation from them. But they also add to our Safe and Supportive Schools presentation that is going to be coming right after it. So, um, I really want to thank them both again for, you know, all their hard work on, uh, putting this presentation together and getting it ready for the Martin Luther King. They were prepared to do it live, but then we got back to school after the New Year and, uh, we determined it was going to be a virtual presentation. So they, uh, Nora, as well as Andreas and Camilla and Ty all had to videotape all the presentations, send them to Amy and myself, and we had to try to put it into the format. But we're going to do a live presentation tonight, so I'd like to call them up and have them talk about the civics program that they do in grade eight.
As mentioned earlier, our presentation was a part of last Monday's Dr. Martin Luther King Junior event. Civics is important, is an important course because it teaches our students about how our national system of government works and how to engage actively in our local communities. Through activities like identity trees, civics also connects directly to the Danvers Public School goal to live in inclusive communities of, in an inclusive community of learners that is respectful of individual difference and in which all students are valued for their unique strengths, talents, and challenges. So without further ado, here's Ms. Facet. Ms. Facet will start us off.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. So thank you for having us. We are honored and really excited to be here to share just a little bit about what we do. We're now in the third year of the new civics curriculum and we couldn't be happier. It's something that my colleagues, Liza Barrett, Marcy Jalinas, and I take great pride in. Uh, it's such an important subject where students are really able to make those everyday connections. And it's amazing to see the adult, mature, intelligent conversations that these kids can have held with poise. So, Mr. Norton, I think, think alike, great minds. And I'd like to introduce Nora.
Um, hello, my name is Nora Nickerson. I do the musical and I'm in Hawks and Harmony, and I'm currently taking civics and I'm an eighth grader.
So what is civics? Civics can also be known as citizen education or democracy education. It's a vehicle that prepares students and young people today to become well-informed citizens and future voters, while allowing them to be active, civically engaged, community participants now. It's also a tool to teach kids about democracy and the importance of upholding all of these values. This year, one of the highlights that we have to look forward to is working with Jen Breaker. We're actually meeting with her tomorrow, uh, as well as the town hall when we're, um, when we're learning about our local town government and collaborating with the town officials during our Student Action Project, which we'll mention a little bit later. And another important point to stress is that I teach my students how to think, not what to think. Today's generation of children plays a vital role in creating an inclusive and welcoming community, both within Danvers and the world beyond. The future of democracy depends on our students' development of knowledge, skills, and dispositions that will enable them to embrace democracy's potential while recognizing its challenges and inherent dilemmas. Civics is important to me because it's a safe community where we can all explore different cultures and learn how to respect other people despite their backgrounds. We also learn how to talk about difficult topics without being insensitive to others' pasts. Community to me is a safe space where we can all be who we are and a respectful and kind space where you feel welcomed and you want to be a part of. Our first unit was the identity tree project, involved the identity tree project. We looked at who we are as individuals and what makes us us. Our task was to create an, an identity tree with words or graphics that illustrate who we are in the inside and on the outside. Our biggest questions were who are you, how does your identi, and how does your identity influence your view on the world? The product of that project was a tree where we could see where our roots were, which was like our past. We would put important people, places, events, and anything that has had a lasting effect on who we are. The trunk is who we are now. We would put personality traits and anything we were comfortable sharing. Outside of the trunk on the left is how other people see us, where we could see, like, ask peers on how we, how we present ourselves to the classroom. On the right is how we try and make ourselves be, whether this is through social media or just how you intend to come across. And the branches and anything in the sky was the hopes and dreams for the future and changes we would want to see in the world. After we finished all of our trees, while keeping them anonymous, we posted them around the classroom and we could do a gallery walk where we could see everyone's identities and what they put. This allowed us to see how other individuals in our classroom community, like what their experiences were, um, with cultures and backgrounds, so we could make sure to be sensitive to their experiences and potential biases that they could have. This, um, is very important when it comes to when we have, um, more controversial discussions. Um, here are some of the products from the, um, from the project and unit. The importance of this unit was to be able to share our experiences while learning more about others and finding more about ourselves. We also became more aware of how our experiences affect our biases and how to be respectful with said biases. So, uh, just a short little quote that resonates with me and just something to think about is the farther backward you can look, the farther forward you are likely to see. Part of our civics curriculum is connecting the past and the present. Within our topics, we study our country's, um, a timeline of, um, and including groups who have been oppressed. We look at the civil rights movement. Again, a timeline of our country's, uh, voting history, including, um, black Americans, women's, women's suffrage movement, Native Americans. We also learn about monumental Supreme Court cases regarding interracial and same-sex marriages. And this goes back to the idea of teaching my students how to think, not what to think. And students are always presented with multiple perspectives and mostly in the form of primary sources.
Last year in civics, we asked for a student. We learned about how different people throughout history have made changes by process and different ways to see a change in your community. We learned about how to know your races, how to be where we're called around you, and be kind to the people, even if they're different than what you are. Uh, what took away from this in the end was that if you want to see a change in the community, you have to be the one to start it. When we did this before, we, uh, we went to this world where we should have been proud. We took women, people of color, people of gender, people with differences, any type of. We all had difficulties, struggles with our people, people who had other disabilities. Part of the project, in my opinion, was learning how to accept those different people and learning to be aware of your own life story and how to fix it. I felt it was also very interesting because we learned about how it could have formed a truth and how they responded in an amazing way. They have it violent, or even if they have, they'll be achieved and try to get the community to act together for the benefit of not having any more standing in school and things like that.
One of my favorite parts of our curriculum are the debates and discussion, and especially with practicing civil discourse. So practicing and engaging in civil discourse is necessary in order to have a productive conversation, especially when it comes to talking about longstanding and sometimes controversial issues. Some of the topics and coming up next week are our Second Amendment rights and cruel and unusual punishment, AKA the death penalty. So for all you history boxers, Second and Eighth Amendments. And a former student, now a sophomore, wrote, "What I learned and will use in the future is how I argue, is how to argue in a formal and polite way, while debating my argument in an effective way." While we haven't started the debate unit yet, we have had practice with civil discourse. During Project Talk, um, we came up with, um, norms for when we do have debates or discussions. We all came to the conclusion that we will value all opinions and respect others. We will listen carefully and intently and stay engaged. We will show patience and grace and keep a calm voice. We will practice positive, positive body language and give nonverbal affirmations. And we will acknowledge that discomfort is okay. Like I said, we haven't started the debates, but we know that when we do start the debates and get into more controversial topics, that we will have to keep these norms to make sure that it is a respectful space still. Last year was our first year of implementing our Student Led Action Project. It's a, it's an amazing, uh, project where kids really take ownership of that. Um, the Student Led Action Project is a cumulative project that provides young adults like ourselves the opportunity to practice civil, civic knowledge of our government as well as civic skills in order to identify a problem and to engage in the process to make a change in our community.
I think she's going to say just what you said.
So I kind of mentioned this, um, a little before, but the assignment was to, to find something in the community that the kids would like to improve. So through a variety of activities, we're able to create a list. And, and last year we kept it because of COVID, um, and it being our first year. We kept it on a small scale and we, we stuck within our, our school community. And, um, Camilla had said, "We all found something that we were interested in and wanted to fix or improve." And we have some examples. There was recycling within neighborhoods, having better meals in the cafeteria, unfair treatment toward a particular sex, and many more.
For me, this Student Action Project is something I'll never forget. It was a opportunity for me to finally make a difference in my community and have support from the teachers and adults in my neighborhood. We chose problems that we were deeply committed and came up with ideas to solve. We came up with solutions, plans, and steps. There were people who could help us make these changes. I can say that it really made me feel good, made me feel like I could, what I did mattered. And what I took away from it is something I'll always remember. I'll always remember that if there's a problem that I see that I want to fix, I can be vocal about it and I can make changes to it and improve it.
and I can make changes to improve it. My group, we reached out to important people at our principal and our office's teachers to fix problems that we saw that were unfair towards girls in particular. And we wrote emails, we stayed after, so we could work together to groom and draft everything we wanted to say. In the end, we did get to see differences and changes in our school system for us to be able to provide the necessary materials that we did need. And with the help of our teachers and our guidance counselors, the help of the student teachers and everybody, we did get to see a change and it was so great for us to see that. Honestly, I will always remember that next time, or whenever I see something that I want to change, I'll remember this and I'll stand up there myself, be vocal, and try to see the different side I want to see.
Most importantly, I want my students to learn that along with the opportunities and freedoms that they have as Americans, they also have a responsibility to leave this world a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy and Nora, for such a great presentation on our civics, some of the work that you do in civics and the Civics Action Project. That is actually a state mandated project that all eighth graders do across Commonwealth.
Great. Questions and comments from my colleagues?
No, thank you for presenting it. I think, I've been saying this for quite a while, we have so many wonderful programs within our town and our schools, so it's just so nice to see it come to life. So, thank you for taking the time to take us through it. Please extend our thanks to the two remote students as well, who are new to make it here.
Yeah, all, all of the students who presented, that's a lot, lot to present, and that was really, really good. You should be very proud. And I hope that all of your peers have the same engagement and excitement about the topic as you do. So, we thank, thank you to the teachers and to the students who are participating and bringing this to life. Thank you.
It's good to, it's good to have the Danvers Pride presentations back, isn't it?
It is, it is.
We haven't heard from the kids for a long time, so it was good to hear, hear this tonight. Thanks.
Maybe we all need the course on civil discourse. So, thank you. Now go home and do your homework. Thanks for sitting through all this, Dad. You should be proud, you'd be great.
I think she might have a future as a public speaker. All right, so that was a great segue for our safe and supportive learning environments presentation. If you remember a couple of years, a couple of years, it seems like years, a couple of months ago, we started doing presentations on each of our three pillars, the coherent curriculum, instruction and assessment. And then in December, we did diversity, equity and inclusion. And then this month, we're doing safe and supportive learning environments. So, I start with this graphic, my colleagues will laugh at me, I'm always trying to like do a visual for like where we are and what we're thinking about. And a lot of our work has really been focused on, you know, our, in our community, our Danvers Public Schools community, that, you know, our goal is that everyone belongs, that every, like an engaged student is seen, heard and valued in our community. And I think that ultimately, and at the end of the day, that is where we stand. And a lot of the work we do, that is what we're striving for. So, in our strategic plan, we had the following goals for this pillar. We had, we wanted to support all students in inclusive, emotionally supportive and culturally responsive environment. We want to focus on community, I think you forgot that for the last presentation. We want to prioritize student safety and implement practices that build social, emotional capacities within students, faculty and staff. These are our priorities that we started out with in August and we, they still stay with us, that we really work on creating a welcoming community for all. We provide ongoing professional development on diversity, equity and inclusion for all adults. Our goal is to recruit and retain a diverse and culturally responsive workforce. We want to conduct equity audits of policies, procedures and programs. We're going to work on including history of racial oppression and works by authors of color and works from diverse perspectives in our curriculum. And we will be communicating about issues of racism and hate. So, so again, our vision is really, our Danvers Public School vision really kind of supports the work that we do, as it's been read a few times tonight, so I don't read it again to you, but these are two statements from that vision that we really feel supports our social, emotional learning that happens. And you, I think you've all recognized this wheel by now, we've done, you know, some presentations around the five social, emotional learning competencies, and these are the five that are up there, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision-making. So, in Danvers, we do, do explicit teaching of social, emotional competencies, and we do it in different ways at different levels. So, at the elementary level, we do have a block of time that's every day for 15 minutes. What we do for this curriculum is we use our Open Circle social, emotional learning curriculum and we pair that with social, emotional learning read aloud. So, the books really tell the story about the character, you know, really using one of the five competencies. And what it looks like for teachers is like a little Google Slides presentation, and it gives them all the information they need to be able to teach the lessons to students. So, it gives them, you know, our goals, the standards that we meet, the, the Danvers SEL standards that it's meeting. It gives the read aloud book, it gives a link to that book, it gives a link to all the lessons in Open Circle, gives you additional resources. You can see on here, it's a self-management lesson, so we use the terminology in zones of regulation to the color coding that they have. The red is like an angry, you know, I'm an elevated student. Yellow is I'm, I'm headed towards, to the red. The, the blue is you're in a calm space, the green is like I'm in really good space for learning. So, a lot of teachers have been using that over the years to help kids communicate their feelings. And then you can see in this lesson that there's another, there's another read aloud and more lessons for kids to do. So, that's what it looks like at the elementary level. At Holt Richmond Middle School, we have explicit SEL and anti-bullying lessons that are taught during Project Talk, which is about 30 minutes each month. But the, one different twist that Holt Richmond takes is really working on integrating the SEL skills into academic lessons. And they're able to do that work this year because we do have a social, emotional learning coach in Jeff Bartlett. And he has one of our teaching fellows that goes in and works with him, so covers his health class while he's able to go in and integrate with academic teachers or work with a team to think about how to integrate SEL instruction in their academic class. And then at Danvers High School, as you've heard of many times, it's a community block, it's 25 minutes daily. You'll see the yellow, if you see the yellow blocks there, that's when community meeting's happening and that's when there is SEL and relationship building lessons that are happening once every seven days. That is done by student leaders, is a course at Danvers High, you'll hear more about that coming up with Peter. And they, they facilitate these activities. And so, this is really powerful when the, the students are facilitating other students. The other thing that Danvers High started to do is that they are working on bias work and anti-bias work, so doing some implicit bias lessons recently. That's happening during the red assembly block, so Adam and Peter have been working to do those lessons to the whole grade level at one time. But then they go back into that learning block, into the community block and actually do lessons with that. So, the implicit bias work had, just like the identity trees you saw at Holt Richmond, well, they did identity maps, and these are the maps of a few of our high school students. So, they did that with, they did a rough draft with Peter and Adam, and then when they got into the community block, they actually make digital versions of their identity. And then some homerooms really took it a step further and, and started to talk about like our identity, but when we're paired together, and each one of those hands represents a student in the community block, it would build relationships and community within our, our groups so that they can, as Nora was talking about earlier in her presentation, have those difficult conversations that they might have about things that are happening, you know, within the school or this, you know, and, you know, and doing some of the implicit bias and anti-racist work that they might do in those blocks. So, that's, that's social, emotional learning, and that's my part of the presentation. I'm going to have Whitney McNeely come up, she's kind of our little spokesperson for Danvers Cares, and she's going to give us a recap of some of the activities.
Yeah, thank you. So, my name is Whitney McNeely. I'm a high school guidance counselor at Danvers and the programming coordinator for Danvers Cares. So, Danvers Cares, as you may know, is a dynamic community partnership that supports youth and families in making healthy decisions. Our Danvers High School and middle school after-school clubs foster positive youth development for our community and a safe and supportive environment within our schools. So, this year, the Danvers High School Club has asked students to promote the concept of attendance matters. So, this has been an issue across the country, especially since the pandemic. Club advisors Stephanie DeSimone and Karen Robinson directed students to make their own posters for the campaign, and you'll see them hanging up around the school. Each poster has a unique reason listed by a student why every day matters. The middle school, Danvers Cares Club, is led by Rebecca Waite, and those students attended the Danvers Tree Lighting back in December. Students represented the club, sold ornaments and carried the banner in the parade. So, now I'm going to discuss three of our community partners and their positive effects on our school environment and how it made it more safe and supportive. So, the first partner is Nagley, the North Shore Alliance for LGBTQ+ Youth. Nagley visited the high school and the middle school recently to create a welcoming presence for LGBTQ+ youth and allies. Students were invited to sign the pride flag and take home Nagley bracelets and other merch. So, the next community partner is the NAN Project. This is a nonprofit that brings mental health speakers to schools. The NAN Project speakers presented in high school health classes last week, and our hope is for students who hear these lessons and speeches to feel more connected, less alone, and to understand better how to help themselves or a friend when they're in crisis. And the third community partner I'm talking about is the Beverly Hospital, and this is a bit of a longer example, just to give you an idea of the safe and supportive environment. So, the Beverly Hospital led a focus group that myself, Stephanie and Karen co-facilitated for 14 students that we kept anonymous. The leader asked our youth to share positive and negative experiences with health and wellness-related resources in our schools and our community. This discussion was excellent, actually, and it had full engagement from every student that was there. The conversation was intended to be 45 minutes, but it ended up being over an hour and a half due to the enthusiasm of our students. So, some notable things that they shared included that they agreed they can adequately access healthy food options for lunch, they, they agreed that they can find plenty of opportunities for physical exercise through the athletics department, the rec department at the town, or the YMCA in town. They all agreed that they can access mental health resources and other resources in school, thanks to the nurses, guidance counselors and social workers. And then some negative experiences that they listed were trying to change our school culture passionately. They discussed all these ways, they had ideas on how to improve it, have more positive social discussions, like we talked about for the middle schools doing. And it's a difficult topic, but they all agreed they really are passionate about approaching it more in the future. So, they expressed that it is difficult for them to decide when to remain quiet and when to speak up when faced with a peer who is being disrespectful. And this concept, we'll talk more about, being a bystander versus an upstander. And they all agreed that the pandemic has impacted their mental health, it's a national problem, it's reflected here in Danvers, just like it is in every school in the country right now. Learning and living on social, on social media and online for school was really difficult, and they're anxious for how things are panning out. So, this was a really honest discussion with the students, so it was really amazing to be there for it. I just wanted to share some quotes from students that were there. A junior said, "I didn't know I related to my peers so much. I didn't know how many of the other students felt, but I really connected to them after this." A senior in the room said, "This was the best discussion I've been a part of in years in high school." And another senior said, very impressively said, "We are working towards an understanding of others, we are affected by what happens every day at the school, and this group was very helpful to learn what we have in common. It's time for us to start the work." So, I wanted to add that quote, I thought it was very well said. So, this group discussion we had that one day in the fall gave the three staff members, Stephanie, Karen and I, just the inspiration to try to replicate this experience again for our students in the future and give them that safe and supportive environment and hopefully more connections. So, lastly, our team is hoping to do a healing event for the community that will happen in the spring. And that is all my updates for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Whit.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Andy St. Pierre with the Wellness Committee update.
Good evening, everyone. Just give a quick update on our Wellness Committee meetings. We meet four times a year with representatives across the district. In November, we met as we usually do to review the wellness policy. We received a food services update from Emily Cook and the Director of Food Services. We talked very briefly initially about the Light the Night Purple event, which hopefully will be coming back in the spring, about soliciting volunteers to help us get that event back in action after a little layoff. Then we spoke about the Atlas and Athena Program, which is sort of the mentor program we have for freshman student athletes, helping those freshmen sort of transition into high school and discuss issues, topics that might come up in their careers at the high school level. Where we pair up upper-class student leaders, student athlete leaders with freshmen and sort of talk through different drugs and alcohol, health and wellness, nutrition, physical fitness, that sort of stuff. And this year, we actually had a, a component about diversity, equity, inclusion, anti-bias. That went over really well. I've been doing this for a bunch of years now, and this was the, the best attended one we've had across the board. A couple of years ago, we moved from once a week for four or five weeks, and we moved it to just one week every day after school, and the last day was the, the anti-bias stuff. It just really was a positive experience, the turnout was good, the participation was really great, so we're looking forward to growing that in the future. In January, we got a, a Danvers Cares update similar to what you just received from Whitney about the positive youth development. We got an, an update on the baseline testing impact program from our trainer, Ms. Amanda Porter. It's basically, it's, it helps us diagnose and treat kids with supposed head injuries and return them to play in a proper manner safely, so they can get back in action and get back in school and do the right stuff. We also reviewed the concussion policy as a district and what it means and who it affects throughout the district. In February, we will discuss the Youth Risk Behavior Survey that we'll be administering in the, in the spring for both the middle school and high school students. We will discuss the chemical health policy, which is the drug and alcohol and substance policy that affects student athletes. We'll have an equity training update. And then in March, our final meeting, we will have an expert screening update from the nurses. We'll discuss EpiPen CPR training, AED and Narcan updates. And then finally, we will talk about Light the Night Purple, which will be a busy time for that group in, in the preparation for that event, which we're all looking forward to as a, as a group. Are there any questions for Wellness Committee?
Any questions on the presentation? Thank you, Andy.
You're welcome.
Great, and then our last speaker for the Safe and Supportive Schools is Adam Federico, and he worked with some Danvers High students to create a Danvers High Anonymous reporting form.
So, just very quickly, a lot of the work that we've been doing is around student voice and empowering students to improve the culture at our school. One thing that the student body felt strongly about was improving the ability to report things that are happening that are concerning. And so, we worked with our Issues to Action Club and Antidiscrimination Club to come up with a anonymous reporting form. The students actually felt strongly that it needed to be a paper-based form. They, they felt the technology-based wouldn't have the same impact and kids wouldn't take it as seriously, but they felt like that a paper-based form, that students would, that if they're taking that form, they're going to take the time because it's meaningful and it's important. So, we developed, you know, this with our student groups, using a lot of their suggestions around language. And this is now in play, it's been shared with the student body and the faculty, they're available in every classroom, every instructional space, and these forms can be filled out, given to any adult in the building. They'll be transferred to the, the main office, to the administration, where it will result in an investigation of whatever the concern is that's raised. And we've already had some turned in, so we feel like it's, it's just another avenue for kids who are maybe hesitant to bring something forward. This gives them a different way to share concerning information that they witnessed or that they experienced.
Do you have any questions for Adam while he's up there?
I mean, I would simply say, I know we've talked about this, and it's nice to see that you've rolled it out pretty quickly, put it together. Sounds like you got student input too into what it would be and what it would look like. And so, when you get these forms, it will trigger a response from the administration and...
Correct. It'll, it'll, it'll trigger an investigation into whatever was reported. The anonymous form alone can't result in disciplinary action or, or formal action, but the, the form triggers the investigation, which... the form triggers the investigation, which can then lead to whatever steps make sense or whatever referrals make sense.
I like that. To me, it enters a level of, creates a level of accountability, and it eliminates the "I told somebody" versus "No, we never heard about it." So I think that's great to... Other comments for the committee? No, okay, we're good. Thank you. Thanks, Adam.
All right, and then I talked about all the kind of the visioning that we've done around the diversity, equity, inclusion work in the district. And then this is a list of what's been happening, starting in January with our diversity, equity, inclusion work. We have the Holocaust Symposium, which members of the community, Danvers High students, Danvers High teachers and administrators take part in on Thursdays from January 6th through February 10th. We have the Elementary Community Learning Workshop, which happened last Tuesday and will happen this coming Tuesday, to really talk about what's, some of the culturally responsive work we're doing at the elementary level. Janelle Ridley started, I think, today with the Student Leadership Game Design for student athletes. I'm working with her. The MIAA has two opportunities that our students are taking part in, is the Anti-Bias Pledge and NFSH online course. And then we have the MIAA Diversity Equity Inclusion Summit that happened last week, last Friday. We had students attend that. We're continuing our culturally responsive read-aloud texts and civics units at, you know, elementary through high school. That's ongoing throughout the school year. And then we, as administrators, and Robin is a member of our team, is a school committee rep, have participated in the Culture of Responsive Practices Leadership Academy. It's helping us with the visioning and for our diversity, equity, inclusion work and really helping us think, use a new equity tool to kind of help us think through any kind of planning processes that we do. And then finally, a group of administrators and counselors are going to be working on a series of workshops called Doing Discipline Differently, kind of looking at that trauma-informed kind of discipline and restorative practices. And that starts this Thursday, and we will have follow-up conversations on February 1st and March 1st. So that is our presentation.
All right, do we have any comments or questions overall?
No, I think that the district is doing great work, and it's, I think a lot of people want change quickly. Like, we are really doing the deep work. It takes time, but just like all the things that we just talked about, it's going to happen. It's just going to take time. And I think, you know, the administrators, the teachers, all the staff members, superintendents, like they're, they want the change, they're putting in the work, we believe in it. It's awesome, it's just going to take time, but it's ongoing. So I think that's just important for the community to remember.
Any other? I would say, I just want to mention the Elementary Community Learning Workshops. Those of us who were able, I think, attended last week, and will attend tomorrow night, and it was really enlightening, and it was, looked like a great example of what we're doing at the elementary school level. And we got to see some of the materials that are being used and kind of walking through some of the activities, so it was really good. And I think those from the community who took the opportunity, I think, really learned something and got to observe what we're doing. So, and overall, boy, there's a lot of stuff going on at every level on the whole issue of equity and inclusion and a safe space, and really, really like what we see. So thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
All right, Sue. All right, appears to me that we are on to new business.
All right. Go ahead.
Yes. We have the Holton Richmond Program of Studies for First Reading, so I'd like a motion.
Yes, so the Acting Superintendents recommend...
Sure.
...the approval of the Holton Richmond Middle School Program of Studies for First Reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I think it'd be good just to highlight the changes real quick, and that's it.
Yep, so Ellen Farick will be coming up to give you an overview. I think on your agenda memo, you'll see, I guess not, it's just the Program of Studies.
Sorry, just getting the right tab to load here. Okay, so as you'll see in the agenda or in the memo, we didn't make too many changes this year. We've updated our learning goals to reflect our school-wide emphasis on academic and social-emotional learning outcomes. In the past, there was a segment on 21st century learning skills that really coincided with our move to one-to-one Chromebooks and really infusing those technology skills into the classroom, and now those have become so commonplace that we felt like that didn't necessarily need to be emphasized in the Program of Studies. The English Language Arts Course descriptions now reflect the inclusion of the Teachers' College Reading and Writing Project reading units of study. We had implemented the writing units several years ago, and now we're starting to infuse the reading units of study as well. And so the descriptions include that language. Probably the bulk of the changes discuss the revised mathematics course descriptions as we've implemented the Carnegie Learning Math Program in grades six through eight. So our descriptions reflect that. And we have an updated description of the Exploring Mathematics course, just really for kind of clarity of purpose and to be just a little, give a little clearer sense to students and families in the community what that course looks like. And then finally, as we heard about tonight, the Action Project in the Grade Eight Civics course, because it was a pilot program last year, we weren't really sure what it was going to look like. We were able to put in more information about what the Action Project entails. Any questions about Program of Studies?
Yeah, so that's for, so this is for First Reading, meaning if we have suggestions or changes, it's best to offer them now. It'll come back next month for a final vote. So I'm going to open it up. Alice, do you have any comments or concerns?
No, no, I'm part of the subcommittee, so I was taken through it in a lot of detail. And, you know, I want to make sure Ellen gets the credit that she deserves, because this isn't giving her enough credit. I think what I learned, just even as a parent, is how our curriculum has been updated and continues to be updated, and what that means for our teachers and our students over the course of the last couple of years. So it was just very refreshing for me to hear it and to see it. There's just a lot of passion from the whole team at the middle school level around the curriculum and the changes that have been made. So I just want to make sure that, you know, the rest of the committee knows that Robin wasn't able to join, she was sick, but she reviewed it herself as well, so no questions or comments.
Thank you. Robin, you're part of the committee also.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't able to attend it. I looked at it as an educator perspective, and I was, it was nice, I think Alice looked at it from, you know, a parent perspective, so, I mean, I thought it was very clear. I mean, I honestly didn't even realize all the amazing classes that we had at the middle school. I don't think they existed. When I attended, maybe they did, and they just weren't publicized, I don't know. But I think it really, you know, I encourage, I encourage families to actually look at it, because I think that you really will see all the opportunities that your student has by attending the middle school, and again, when we get to the high school piece, too. So.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions or comments?
No, I mean, I agree. I think, you know, every year or two, we, you know, really take a very hard look at the courses and the curriculum and tie it into everything we talked about tonight, civics, et cetera. So it's good to see the overall story unfold and then see actual courses come in, which solidify that thinking, so it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Let's just go.
Oh, nothing, nothing much, but it's good to, I mean, I think what Robin and Alice say is something that we've been watching over the past several years, and it's good to get the perspective of the two of them who have now, you know, now have seen it, because it kind of validates what I already think. But no, I think, I think the what's available is great, and we continue to do a good job with that, and so I don't see, I'm happy with it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm content as well, so thank you for the presentation.
Of course, thank you.
We will have a motion, I have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor for First Reading, say aye.
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 Proposed, none. There you go. All right, and next up, the high school proposed studies.
So the Acting Superintendents recommend the approval of the Danvers High Program of Studies for First Reading.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any changes that you want to make us aware of? That's a good place to focus, yeah.
Yes, I'll just go through a quick overview. To summarize the major changes, we're continuing to think about ways we can provide a variety of opportunities for students to pursue individualized or advanced study at the high school. So we have new options for seniors as their area of concentration gets more focused, as they go into their fourth year of study. We have other courses in our Unified Arts Department that allow students to refine skills after they've taken at the foundational level, and also some new opportunities for students to practice student leadership in the building. So first, just to quickly go over some senior opportunities. In our math department, we have a new quantitative reasoning class as a fourth-year math course, also typically offered at the college level to expand on options available to students not interested in taking AP-level math courses. In ELA, we've added a social justice literature as a senior-year course, and we don't have a traditional ELA 11, 12 course at DHS. They take a more individualized course to meet the needs or interests that they have. So this will join the other senior ELA courses such as AP Literature, College Career and Communication, Evolution of the Hero, and Writing Workshop. And then also for our 12th graders, we restructured a world language elective for Spanish for intermediate contemporary topics. And this allows students to build their intermediate for Spanish skills in a topic domain of interest to them, while increasing their voice and choice and picking the topics they'd like to discuss while building their language proficiency. And so these full-year electives include Life After High School, Latin American Music, Words and Actions, and Latin American History and Society. Additionally, in addition to our expansion of opportunities for seniors, we're also offering new advanced coursework in other departments. So in science, we're adding Medical Interventions Honors, which sounds very exciting, I'd love to teach that course. It'll be the third course in our Project Lead the Way Biomedical Science Pathway. So it's, in addition to our first two courses in the sequence, Principles of Biomedical Science and Human Body Systems. And then in our Unified Arts Department, we have several new offerings, including Advanced Manufacturing, DECA III, Advanced Entrepreneurial Studies, Advanced Digital Photography, and AP Art Drawing. And so we're excited to continue to offer these opportunities to students that have enjoyed and mastered the foundational skills in these areas and want to continue to refine and push further in their learning. Additionally, in our Special Education Fundamentals Program, we've ensured that students have a full complement of options in the CO-TOT or Fundamental setting, including the addition of courses such as Discrete Math, U.S. Government and Civic Engagement, and Marine Ecology. And then lastly, the last two things I want to talk about as we're thinking about opportunities for student leadership, both within our school community and in their college and career preparation, we've added the course Leadership and Community Honors to the Program of Studies, which directly supports the creation of the community block structure, which Mary talked about earlier. So a significant course objective is for the participating students to help lead the school's community meeting program by working with the instructors in the classes and the classmates to prepare the engaging content for the session, so all the lessons for the community meetings are driven directly by the students in that class. And so they're in charge of initiating, assisting in the constructive conversations, using protocols, doing the SCL activities, and other additional projects in terms of facilitating reflections, public speaking practice, and personal identity studies. And additionally, we're excited to pilot our early college program this spring in partnership with North Shore Community College. So we've added descriptions of the first three courses students will take as part of the early college program, and we'll add the remaining courses over the next two years once they're finalized, potentially allowing students in the program to graduate with 25 college credits that can transfer to North Shore or public colleges universities. So the ones included are the first course students will take in the spring semester of their sophomore year, Understanding Higher Education. And then we've also included the two classes they take during their junior year, Speech and Composition. So overall, we're just excited to provide all these additional opportunities and look forward to our continued work with students to provide them with meaningful coursework as they finish their high school career.
Great. So let's turn to our, again, the members of the committee. So we'll start with Robin this time, and then Alice.
This got brought up earlier, Alice and I. I think this dual enrollment, because we're talking a lot about like numbers, that, and I don't know, maybe Essex Tech does it, I don't know, I know that, you know, the private schools know. This, I think, could be like a really big sell, because I'm thinking, like, you're going to, you said 25 credits, you could, okay. So you can then finish, right, like at North Shore Community College, and then from there, there are certain schools, I don't remember what they were, then will take you, like, it's like the tuition's cheaper, right?
You'll save time, save money.
Yeah, all, yeah. So, I mean, I think this could be like a really big sell, and I don't want to use it like the, like marketing, but like, it's almost like this, I think, is a great marketing tool for DHS. Like, we have awesome resources for the kids.
We talked about this. We do not give ourselves enough credit of the courses that we offer our students, and I think we can do a much better job in getting our students excited about the high school and what we do have to offer. You know, I know we talked earlier about Essex Tech specifically, but we're competing against five other schools just within our town, and what our school offers, I don't, I think we need to not wait until the eighth grade to educate families and students about it. I think we need to get them excited about it in the sixth grade, because as a parent, I'm looking at this, and I'm like, oh my God, yeah, he could take this and that and graduate, have 25 college credits, you kidding me? So I think we need to, even just as a school committee and as an administration, like, what can we do to get our kids excited about the high school in a more meaningful way? And I think the courses that we offer can go a long, long way.
That's a great point. Thank you. Jeffrey?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it is a big selling point. I mean, I think the older you get in high school, you are, in many cases, becoming more focused. So looking at the course offerings, you know, just picking one or two of those, particularly, I'll just say this, if you maybe haven't found a club or an activity that you've particularly, or maybe you're in sports or athletics and you devoted four years or so to a particular sport, maybe you haven't, you know, picked something in terms of an activity, you could go into, you know, marine biology or, and that's a good way for you to test and see, you know, do I really want to do this in college? And maybe you don't have to take one of the college courses that give you extra college credit, but you can, you can pick it in advance. So that's where I've sort of seen this evolve over the past few years, and I think, I think it's the right strategy, right? I think it's a, it's a great way for kids who have an interest, who can really push themselves and see where they want to go. So glad that this is where we're headed.
Awesome.
The only thing that I would add to what Robin said is that I think marketing is an okay word to use, because, because that's what we should be doing. We should be showing everybody what we have and what we can do. The prep markets, the tech markets, Pingree markets, they all market, and that's how they get their students. And so we need to not be, we need to think like that, too, and we need to be showing our middle school kids and their parents and the community that we have all of these things that we can offer. And so marketing is an absolute appropriate word to use, because we have things that we can market. And my overall feeling about high school is similar to the middle school. I think we've done a really good job over the past several years. Obviously, we have a whole group of new courses here. I don't want to teach medical interventions, but I want to take medical interventions. So, but great job, and really, I'm serious, don't be, don't be shy about marketing what we have, because we need to get the word out.
Yeah, and I'd agree, the idea of doing it a little earlier, too, not waiting until the eighth grade.
Yeah.
I like that, because we do, we have a good story to tell, and the more we tell it, I think, the better it will be. So thank you, thank you for how you've done this.
Thank you.
Terrific. We have a motion, we have a second. Would any further discussion? With any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye for first reading.
Aye.
All those opposed, none carries. So it'll come back next month for a final adoption. Thank you all. All right, so I think we are ready to move. We have no unfinished business. We'll move on to our order of business. We have the consent agenda. I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Are there any questions on any individual item on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none carries. Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve and release the minutes from the December 13th, 2021 regular meeting, the December 30th, 2021 regular meeting, and to approve and not release the minutes of the December 30th, 2021 executive session.
That was a motion, right?
That was a motion.
So we're just looking for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none carries. Communications, I think we only have the NEC, Keith, is that correct?
Yes, and there's no real items to highlight to start our ongoing agenda.
Okay, and as I said, next month, we'll, we'll fill the role temporarily so that we have a representative who can vote. Legislation, we heard from Sally, I have nothing to add. Subcommittee liaisons, curriculum and assessment, would it be fair to say that we've heard?
Yes.
Equity, anything to offer on that, Jeff? Are we good?
No, I think, I think we covered a lot of it here, honestly, with Mary review.
Okay. Did the policy subcommittee?
Nope, we did not.
Did not. Deep, we heard from Mary Beth gave us a great update. Danvers Cares.
I think Andy talked a lot about the Danvers Cares programs as well that have been happening. I think we went through those, so.
CPAC.
No CPAC meeting. There wasn't a CPAC meeting.
No meetings, okay. Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion, we talked about NLK, we talked about the elementary curriculum presentation, was kind of, you know, fell under that. I'm looking forward to tomorrow night. Budget, Mr. Tavarna.
Your monthly budget report is attached, and then we also have a January transfers report. This is kind of the second time, we always do one in October, and then one in January as we prepare the FY '23 budget.
Okay, any questions for Keith on the budget? All right, none. And personnel?
Your monthly personnel report is attached. No real highlights this month.
Okay.
I would like to highlight that for our February meeting, it will also be our budget hearing at our February School Committee meeting. So just a reminder to the committee, and that will be distributed sometime about a week before, somewhere between a week and five days. Mary and I have been joking with Mary, it goes to print on the 7th. It goes to print on the 7th. So then it's ready for the 14th, but by like Wednesday of that week, you'll have it. And if anybody obviously would like to meet prior, Mary or I or both of us would be happy to meet with you.
All right, thank you. I believe that's all we have on our agenda. So our next meeting is Valentine's Day evening, the 14th, and as Keith said, that'll be our conference.
There's nothing more romantic than a budget presentation.
Really, yeah.
He answered an executive session he's done before, so it's just.
You know, Mary, I certainly can't come on Valentine's.
You're romantic at heart, I know.
So with that, I don't think we have any other interim meetings. I don't think we have a date for either the Selectman or Finco on budget yet, or do we?
No, we do not have dates for that, but the February 1st, next Tuesday, is the Financial Summit for the town with the Select Board and the Finance Committee in the Tumi Room at Town Hall.
That's a town hall. Excellent. That's usually a good evening to attend for, if you can, for the Select's Financial Summit because town managers and his staff really present a real snapshot of what our finances look like, some projections for the future, and it's an eye-opener, very educational. So I would encourage you to attend if you can. And beyond that, I guess we'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Good night, and thank you, Danvers.